Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of Park City City Council on November 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marley, would you call the roll?
John Lynn-Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, Ben's going to lead in the invocation and Melvin's going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that you've given for us to assemble here together again tonight, and we'd ask for your wisdom and guidance in all things that are done here, and that you be honored and glorified in our actions and our words. And Lord, may we work together to bring Park City, Lord, what you would have for them. As we enter this time of Thanksgiving, we're thankful for your provision for us, for seeing us through what for many has been a very difficult year and trying year and very in certain circumstances. We thank you, the Lord, for your faithfulness. Now, we ask that you be and protect each one of our police officers, each one of our staff members, be with our president, the transition, all everything going on, Lord in our nation, protect and guide in that. We love you and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. John?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to approve the agenda with the following amendment. I'd like to delete item 14 from consideration.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six and zero. That brings it.
Sorry if I could, was anybody signed up to speak on item 14?
Gary was.
He knows. I just want to make it clear.
Okay. So that's been removed from the agenda tonight. Thanks, Gary.
Sorry at this point.
We don't have anything for awards or presentations. Doesn't look like anybody signed up for public forum. I don't have that sheet. No. Okay. And we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll hear from our city administrator, Sean Fox. Sean?
Yes, sir. Simple for today's city administrators' report is nothing more to say. Happy birthday, Park City. Two days from today, city is 40 years old. So that is all I have tonight, sir.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? John?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six, zero. That brings us to item five under new business, which is discuss and consider to the reappointment to the CCUA board. Melvin's term has recently come up for expiration. Melvin's done a fantastic job on the CCUA. He has a lot of experience there, and I'd like to keep him on, and I think Melvin would like to stay. Ben?
Sir, I'd like to make the motion to approve the reappointment of Melvin Kerr to the CCUA.
And Tom?
I'd second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six, zero. Thank you, Melvin. We appreciate the extra time that we know we spent on that CCUA board.
Yeah.
That brings us to item six, which is a report from Confluence for the downtown visiting workshop, and Sean's going to take this this evening.
Yes, sir. Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Terry with Confluence was going to be coming down to present on this, but with COVID concerns and everything, he was unable to make the trip. So before you, at each one of the DAS locations is a copy, a paper copy of the downtown district vision report. As Council is well aware, on October 14th, Confluence, which is a Kansas City-based architectural, planning, and urban design firm, facilitated a one-day workshop where its council members, key community stakeholders, and local area experts engaged in a series of discussions with the purpose of developing a conceptual master plan for a new downtown district, a plan that solicits both inputs and ideas involving both city and citizens and outlined realistic possibilities for the property. As a result of the workshop, this attached presentation includes a brief background, the process that was filed, followed, a site analysis overview, a preferred concept, and I will get a little bit more into the preferred concept with color illustrations and recommendations for East 61st Street corridor, as well as character and program precedent, imagery, and demographic data. If we go through the report, you got the cover sheet on the second page. As I indicated, you have your table of contents. The pages are, the document's only nine pages long, talks about the purpose and the intent and the background, giving a little bit of history over Park City, the process to where it was done in three different distinct settings. The first one, we started off the day was with council providing their guidance, and then the second portion of it was with local area developers and stakeholders, and then finally, we followed up with conclusions at the end of the day. If you look at the preferred concept, I don't want anybody hopefully to come away from this, looking at this and saying, this is the plan. What a preferred concept is, is it was embodying all the guidance and inputs provided from the workshop that kind of said notionally, conceptually, this is how it could look, that all the very, it's kind of like baking a cake. We've included all the different ingredients, but we still don't know what the cake is going to end up being. So there is residential included in the concept. There is a vast amount of open space, green space for the concept. There is some mixed use in there as far as three and four-story tall buildings where mixed use you'd have commercial primarily on the lower floors and then residential on the upper floors. You also have one- and two-story just dedicated commercial spaces. There is a place there for a community center, and so this, again, is provided from the inputs of that day, a notional concept. It goes on to show that define each one of those districts, what mixed use, residential, and senior housing could look like, what it could be involved with that, and then it shows some imagery of other things for the council to consider. Towards the tail end of it, it goes into the East 61st Street corridor, how this is our gateway into the community, our major east-west corridor, and there are opportunities along that corridor to make improvements to actually bring people from the highway over to the proposed downtown district area. And then finally, it concludes with some demographic data and market review that provides some contextual background for the concept itself. This is what we had expected coming out of Confluence, was to facilitate the discussion to start as council indicated a couple months ago. Now that we've secured the property, we need to look forward to planning and making certain that this is, it's a race, but it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. It's going to take some time to make certain that we take a look at the infrastructure that's required and come up with a solid plan as to what the future would actually be. This would lead into, as far as this, sir, there is no action required by the council other than just to receive the brief, and then this will lead into the next agenda item. If you would like, I can continue on or answer any questions that council may have from the draft report.
Does anybody, Ben?
I just go ahead and make a motion that we receive and file this report.
Third second.
Sure.
John? Okay. Got a motion and second. Just before we vote on this, just looking at the preferred concept, they did a really nice job of pulling together what I feel like most of the council brought up when we went over the quick sketches that we saw that afternoon. Looks like they really pulled from each one of the designs and the items that were listed that everybody kind of wanted to see, so I think this is a great starting point for a concept that they put together for us. So I wish Terry was here to hear that, but they did a fantastic job.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six, zero, and that brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider a new scope of service and fees for the upcoming work and master agreement for the council's approval.
Yes, sir. Leading on to that, building upon the workshop and the master plan presented, we are now recommending a continued relationship with Confluence to further refine the plan of the new downtown district by one incorporating community input. Involved in the visioning workshop, we had some key community stakeholders involved. We had folks from the library come over from the chamber as well to provide some input, but I do believe that there needs to be some public engagement to make certain that there's input on the design character as well as the programming goals. Additionally, what they would be charged with is also developing some design standards to promote some consistency in appearance and quality of design and construction. Under their proposed scope of service, Confluence would refine that plan, provide the updated sketches and imagery based on that community input. The imagery would contain a conceptual 3D massing study model showing building massing alternatives and a summary of preferred character and aesthetics. In addition, Confluence would define the general parameters for site developments, architectural standards, green space standards, and placemaking and urban design standards for potential developers and other project partners. The total cost of the scope of services outlined is $24,200. It is an unbudgeted item, but council, I believe, is aware that the Park City Chamber of Commerce applied three months ago and was approved for a $25,000 Evergy Hometown Grant for the specific purpose of aiding the city in hiring a consultant to develop and prepare the plans further. So by using that, that would cover the cost of this additional services provided by Confluence. The expected timeline for this would be somewhere over the next three to four to six months, depending on community engagement and how that would occur in this type environment of what we've got going on currently. The results that would come out of that would be a much further and detailed report that then we could go ahead and make a determination and actually adopt it as part of our comprehensive plan, create a new appendix to the comprehensive plan for the downtown district, and then we could go forward with that and issue out a request for proposal or request for qualification seeking development teams that are willing to partner with the city to make this vision an actual reality.
This really covers everything that I've kind of been visioning what this looks like, especially when we talk about design standards and kind of setting what that end result or end product looks for us, looks like for us, and puts us in the driver's seat of making sure we get what we want at the end. I've always looked back to previous councils and what they had done and their desire for the future for this, and wanted to make sure we continued on that path. And I've always kept those posters in my office of layouts for the old, for the library and the city hall and what that looked like, and we've been able to take on some of those tasks and do them, but this will really help us unify kind of the vision for the future and, you know, have a good five, 10-year plan out ahead of us on how we can really create this downtown district. With the grant that we got, partnered through Evergy, I think this is a great, great way to spend that money. So. Does anybody else have any comments? Ben?
I do want to say thank you to the Park City Chamber of Commerce for working through with Evergy on this grant. I think that's a huge help. I know when council member Bailey and I were campaigning and back in 17, one of the big things we were stressing was downtown development, and not that it wasn't already being done, but that was a big goal, and to see it moving forward and the steps taken by staff along with this council and our partners, it's a great thing to see. I know there's other comments, so I'm not going to make a motion.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I think overall, if you look out five to 10 years from now, this is a great starting point. I know we've talked about it before, but just to give an outline, give a perception of what we want to see and everybody's input on it, I think it's a great way to start out, and we can always conform it or change things as we see fit, but this is a great way to start out. I really appreciate the work that they did on this and including a lot of the things that we wanted, so I think it's a great starting point.
Okay. Tom, did you have something?
No.
Okay. John?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a master agreement for design services and task order number two with Confluence for the downtown visioning project in an amount not to exceed $24,200 to be paid from the proceeds received from the Evergy Hometown Grant.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Just the only thing I'd say is, you know, in order to move forward and do something, we got to have a plan, and this is that start, so good step.
And Tom?
Oh, I was going to second it, but it's happened already.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want any other things you just want to throw out there for Confluence? Just wanted to make sure that I have a new senior center that's designed in this layout, too. That's one of my goals. So we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six, zero. Brings us to item eight, which is receive an update on the 77th Street and Broadway improvements from professional engineering consultants. Tim?
Sir, I'll go ahead and serve it up. Earlier this year, as everyone is aware, KDOT approved infrastructure improvements to Ford Street, what we know as 77th Street, west of Seneca to Interstate 135 under their economic development program. Park City in connection with Valley Center contracted with PEC for design services, and Tim and/or Ben both are here to present that. Again, I would like to highlight the fact that this project is not only in cooperation with Valley Center, but it's also in cooperation with Sedgwick County and KDOT, so this is a great example of municipalities working together to come together rather quickly on a proposed project. Matt, if we can go to the next slide.
Good evening, everyone. Like Sean said, I'm here to present the geometry for... Oh, sorry. Good evening. Like Sean said, I'm here to present the geometry and the layout for the roundabout at 77th and Broadway. You can see there up on the screen, in general terms, it's a four-legged roundabout with one center circle and what will effectively be free rights along the east side, then we'll have a three-lane section to the west, widening out for turns into all those homes. And then on the next slide, we don't have to go to it yet, but we'll develop a left-turn lane into both Craig Street and to 81 Speedway that are across from each other, so that should help alleviate some of the turn volume out of the through lanes. In general terms, we have tried to miss as many utilities as possible, both for simplicity and cost and speed. Like Sean said, this is on a pretty advanced schedule, so we are hitting a couple light poles that we've met with Evergy about, they're minor poles that they can deal with at a higher speed than some of the big transmission lines that are running through there, so it's an impact to them, but a minor one at this point. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have about the project.
Does anybody have any questions?
When does the project start?
Our first submittal is next week, and our last submittal is January 25th.
Okay.
So it's KDOT, so it should be advertised and started in March, I believe.
Is this basically going to be the same size roundabout as the 61st? I'm thinking about the modeling of the semis going through, the potential for larger trucks.
Yeah, this is all modeled for a WB63, which is the largest truck.
And this is a rollback curb or...
Yeah, it's a little hard to understand if you're not used to looking at this, but the inner circle is the apron that you would normally see. Some of the other, what I'll call eyebrows, are separating the inner circle from the outer lane, and then on the outside of that, that's also roll curb, and that effectively moves the cab of the truck over so only the trailer hits that, and it also helps control the passenger's vehicle speeds.
One other thing I got there on the sides that have got the high dirt, will there be a barrier built along there, or is it milled back far enough that we don't have to worry about that?
You're talking about on the 81 Speedway?
The south side, you know, on one side, 81 Speedway's kind of low and then build up. On the other side, there's a pretty steep hill.
Yeah.
And on the north side, the same way a little bit, I think.
We're tying in pretty well, and I don't think we should have a big berm on either. 81 Speedway's well off where we're at, and there's a creek actually there. It is a little tighter on the east side, but we don't anticipate any retaining walls or anything like that.
I just have a question. I guess, and again, this is not my area of expertise, but I just wanted to ask a kind of a question just as a normal person, but westbound on 77th Street to go south on Broadway, just, I mean, for a lot of, I mean, I'm just expecting a lot of trucks. With the shape of that, it's kind of an oval shape? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the shape is different than probably most roundabouts you've seen, but elongating it there in that direction actually keeps us from having to go wider in the other direction, so it kept us from really getting into the significant Evergy conflicts.
And that you don't anticipate any trouble for trucks in that?
No. We have run, I don't want to say a billion, but it feels like a billion truck movements through this roundabout in every plausible scenario.
And how about on the southbound Broadway? It kind of comes at a little bit of an angle. Is there going to be any, we got an email from a citizen about kind of an angle and it's a little bit of a drop to get down to the intersection, or maybe it's up? I'm trying to remember the angle that he was saying.
Southbound going straight through?
Yeah.
So it's not a straight shot, and that's what we want, because we wanted to control that speed of that vehicle coming through, so you start them kind of towards the center and then they got to go back around and almost weave through the intersection. That's on purpose. That's one of the main routes where if we don't slow them down, they have the potential to do damage to the roundabout and themselves trying to take that at high speed, so. Thank you.
This has been one of the projects I know the council's been focused on, 77th and 85th Street, dangerous intersections. I know we've got 61st Street coming, 77th Street right behind that, and hopefully we can tackle 85th shortly thereafter.
Matt, could you go to the next slide? Just so you have a chance to see that there's a little bit of detail provided as far as the entrance into 81 Speedway. We've contacted the owners of 81 Speedway to make certain that they're well aware and supportive of that, so it is going to have a deceleration lane and everything. It could not be started farther to the west because of some concerns with power lines and power poles, Evergy and everything, but 81 Speedway is well aware of this and supportive of it as well.
All right. Would there be a motion to receive and file this? John?
A motion that we receive and file this document?
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six, zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ben.
John, how much time you think we need for recess?
Five, six minutes, sir.
Let's go 10.
Okay.
Can we get a mo, Ben?
I make the motion we recess for 10 minutes.
Second.
Second? Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six, zero. And that passes six zero. All right, welcome back. We're going to reconvene as Park City City Council at 7:43. And that brings us to item 11, which is discuss and consider approval of a cost share agreement between the city of Park City, Rushlight Wichita LLC, Murdoch Properties, and Rural Water District Two to pay for the design and construction of a water main improvements north of 69th Street from Broadway to 135. Sean?
Yes, sir. Towards the tail end of our last meeting, council was briefed that we've been working with Baughman Company and area developers to design, engineer, and construct a new eight-inch water line, tapping off our existing 12-inch line on the east side, or I should say, the west side of Broadway and 69th, and then running the line on the north side of 69th Street. Attached is a proposed four-way cost share agreement between the city, Rushlight Wichita LLC, Murdoch Properties, and Rural Water District Two, outlining the financial responsibility to be shared equally between the city and the two developers. Rural Water District Two is not involved in this from a financial stake, other than that they would forego or vacate their easement in front of the property located at the northeast corner of 69th and Broadway once construction is complete. The anticipated completion of the new water line would be by the end of January 2021. We have gotten concurrence. All parties involved have seen the contract and agreed to it to content. Just waiting for council to make certain that we're willing to go forward and that this is the direction that they want to go. So staff is recommending approval and authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with all parties involved.
Ben?
I'd like to move to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute an agreement with Rushlight Wichita LLC, Murdoch Properties, and Rural Water District Number Two.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to item 13, which is discuss and consider approval of the Platte Industrial Park A final plat for the property located one-half mile north of 53rd Street North and east of Hydraulic Avenue. Sean?
Yes, sir. Following on the last item, this is now the contract to support that proposed agreement. It's a proposed contract with McCullough Excavation to construct and install the new water line. They're the ones that are currently on site at that development, putting in infrastructure improvements. Again, the attached anticipated completion of the new water line would be by the end of January 2021. It is an unbudgeted CIP. This was not foreseen. The total cost estimate that came in was 100 and, where is it? Let me make certain. Quote the correct amount. Hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is $550 below the engineer's estimate. And the proposed agreement that council just approved proposes that the three entities, Murdoch Properties, Rushlight Wichita LLC, and the city split it three ways. So our costs would be approximately all told right at $63,000 for the new water line.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any question? John?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with McCullough Excavation Incorporated.
Round 13.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Round 12. How did I get this?
For an amount not to exceed.
Sorry.
No, I did that a while ago. That's why I was saying, I'm sorry, because I thought I did it again. Let me start over. I'll make a motion to approve and finalize the mayor to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with McCullough Excavation Incorporated for an amount not to exceed 158,950 to be paid out of the utility fund water department.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to 13, which is discuss and consider the approval of the Platte Industrial Park A final plat for the property located one-half mile north of 53rd Street North and east of Hydraulic Avenue. Sounds familiar, Sean?
Yes, sir. Again, Carl F. Young Trust, the owner of the property located north and east of the corner of 53rd Street and Hydraulic, as well as its agent Baughman Company, are requesting approval of a final plat entitled Pratt Industrial Park. the budget and everything and believes that we can get it all resolved in our December 8 meeting. So.
We got a motion in a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes 6-0. That brings us to closing remarks, and we'll start with John since you're always on the other side.
So I guess really all I had, I was going to mention, let me pull it up here, sorry. One of our members of the Park City Convention Tourism Board is going to step down, and it's Hank Flossi, if I'm saying that right.
Hank Blaze?
Blaze, sorry. He's been on for 25 years.
Wow.
Been on convention tourism so that long. He's been just a great thing and wealth of knowledge. So anyway, that's it. All right. Tom?
I've got something I wanted to, I've got to ask the planning commission about shirts, about getting new shirts. And they've only been issued one shirt since whenever they came out. So I was asked about that. I thought I would pursue maybe talking to John at CNT sometime, or I think they bought them last time for him. We're talking to the chamber about doing that, so.
We could probably do that.
And if I'm going to, pardon?
We can do that. Get some flag where he is.
One of the things I was thinking about too here a while back is the council president every year. We always elect one, which is fine. But I was looking at alternative, kind of like they've got south of us in the big city where every council gets an opportunity in a rotation and kind of look at maybe going to something like that or bringing it up. The guy doesn't want to do it, he can opt out, or lady, whoever's on the council at the time, and then adjusting everybody's salary. Maybe not pay extra for the council president, just give everybody a bump, 25 bucks a month or something.
Yeah.
Trying to look for new things, okay?
All right.
That's all I got.
Brandon?
So Thanksgiving this week, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Just know that in this day, things are different out there. People aren't celebrating with their family. Maybe do a COVID, maybe do a divorce, who knows? Just if you see someone out there, just be kind to them. Reach out to them. You don't know what kind of emotions they have going on, so just try to be kind in this, during the holiday season.
Ben?
We're going to go out order. Again, I'll echo that. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you stay safe. It's definitely a different year when you're talking how family gatherings might look like, what they might look like. But at the same point, we also don't know if these might be our last ones, so take full advantage.